Hayan nek, da'ani mandas isis joss. I search, I search, I search. Hey, eli go. Brother, let's pray, brother. Hey. Eli go. I'll find you, Jesus, I'll find you. Till I see you. In Jesus' name. We are still going to pray. Hey, Jesus Christ. I know that Jesus is around. He was before my own house. Hey, see, in Jesus' name. In the scriptures, they say there was a guy. The guy was sleeping in the night. God came, he did not know. You know what he said? When he woke up, he said, "Ah! God was here and I knew it not." Hey, no, that will not be. In Jesus' name. We are just, we are trying to stop. If your friend is here, your friend, you are being, you are trying to preserve your students. Just leave your friend, I come and stand in this front. In Jesus' name, us one nibbo. I constrain, I constrain. I'm not looking at my nibbo, Jesus. Leave my nibbo, leave my nibbo. I don't have any other option, Jesus. Hey, if you don't come for me, I'll finish. Bro, get your, akuna kai, akuna kai. Ata tai. Ebono, akuma, akuma. I insist, I insist. Let's go this way. Jesus, 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 Jesus. Mea yu, Jesus mea yu. I don't mind how many are many, I don't mind, Jesus. I insist, I insist. I will not go, I will not. Till I encounter, I encounter, I encounter the only one of Israel. Mea yu, Jesus mea yu. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Let me hear very loud amen. In Jesus' name. Today we are going to cry. See, when Jesus resurrected, some people, when they came to the tomb, they saw the truth that is very accurate. They were satisfied. What are the differences, what is Jesus? Kamba, kaba, kabuna. Hey, ya na kamba. Hey, ya kumma, kana, katiya. Jesus, Jesus. Ay, 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 ay. Let's pray now without the song. In Jesus' name. Have mercy upon me. What did I say?
Jesus, thou son of David. Have mercy upon me.
We shout this for seven times. Jesus must let me. All the people that are happy show a bloodline. Jesus was around. And I'm still like this. Jesus. Let's go, number one. Jesus, thou son of David. Have mercy upon me. We don't shout this chant from the death of my heart. Jesus must let me tonight. Number two. Jesus, thou son of David. Have mercy upon me. Number three. Jesus, thou son of David. Have mercy upon me. Number four. Jesus, thou son of David. Number five. Jesus, thou son of David. Six. I go to shout this event to him at the top of our voice. And then begin to cry. Number seven. Jesus, thou son of David. Have mercy upon me. Let's cry now. Arudoki no kame, Jesus. Hold your leg. I hold your hand, I hold your head. Help me, help me now, help me. Eli go, Eli go, luma ka. Masa. I am no doubt, I am no doubt choice. Connect your arms, connect your arms. I seek coin, Jesus. Jesus, have mercy on my brothers. My daughter cries, Jesus. My daughter cries, my daughter cries. Mea yu, mea yu, Jesus. Brothers, let's find him, let's find him. Yours can, now yours can. Find you. You must find me. You must find me. You must touch me. You must touch me. Don't mind your nibbo, don't mind your nibbo. See, person I cry. I heard that Jesus can take away addictions. Jesus look at me. I heard that Jesus can help addictions. He knows I'm ill. Tami kuki, tami kuki. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. If you are the bar, call forward. In Jesus' name. The team is to find an encounter. Katais, katais. Is he the God that encounters me? I encounter him, but I cannot go like this. Is somebody ready for tonight? I cannot go like this. I am Pama the only ghost. Pele, 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 pele. Can we cry? Pele ya, shu ku 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 pala. Pabu, pabu, pabu. Tiki, 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 tiki. Pe ku ku ku, pele ya, kaka tai. Poru ku ku ku, paka bu. Salia, valia, papa. Pe pe, pe pe, pe pe. Raku ku ku ku, pele. Igi, 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 igi. Rapa, pa, pa. Pa, 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 pa. Pa, 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 pa. Pa, 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 pa. Pa, 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 pa. I cannot go like this. Pele ya, papa. Pele ya, de, 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 papa, papa, papa. Pe, 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 pe. Pe, 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 pe. Le, 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 le. Can I see, le, 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 desperate? Pele ya, papa, pa. Pe, 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 pa. Pele ya, na, 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 na. Pele ya, de, 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 de. Le, 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 le. Le, 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 le. Pa, 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 pa. 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 Cry out. Pa, 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 pa. Pa, 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 pa. Pa, 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 pa. Pe, 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 pe. Pa, 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 pa. 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 Pe, 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 pe. Blah, 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 blah. Jesus. Pa, 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 pa. Pa, 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 pa. Pa, 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 pa. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. If you go back like this tonight, it's your problem. You must be hard on the hands or the other. Forget your nibbo. I hear you mean, forget your nibbo. Hey brother, I am here for a serious business. And the Bible should not check a breast suit with an angel. I've not seen anybody. I might be holding you, but I've not seen you. I am here for an encounter. He said desperate cry, hey brother. You need to learn Pama the only ghost. And tell him tonight is to laugh. Can we cry out? Pa, 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 pa. 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 I check myself, I will not let you go. I am Pama the only ghost. Pele ya, papa. Pele ya, papa. Pele ya, papa. I am Pama the only ghost. Brother, I am Pama. Pele ya, papa. Pele ya, papa. Pe, 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 pe. Blah, 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 blah. Pele ya, papa. Pele ya, papa. Pele ya, papa. Yeah! Yeah! My, my! Blah, blah! Blah, blah! Blah, blah! Blah, blah! Yeah! 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 Ah! 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 Pa, pa! Pa, pa! Pa, pa! Pa, pa! Blah, blah! 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 Johnny! Pa, pa! 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 In Jesus' name! In Jesus' name! You must say so! I am praying! I hear you, me! It's possible to be there! I must do what I need to do! Oh! You never heard that! I hear you, me! You did business at the outer court! The realm of fire encountered the realm of fast Asia! I hear you, me! That's why you have to move! You have to shift! You have to ascend! Some of you are brave, but you are not! God, your safe! Your spirit, soul and body! I hear you, me! Some persons, they are not brave! You are preaching your body! It's your spirit! Your soul and your body! Raku, podo, podo, pala! Peleia, Papa! 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 Blah! Pa, pa! Pa, pa! Pa, pa! Blah! 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 Pa, pa! Pa, pa! Blah! Yeah! Ah! 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 Blah! 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 Yeah! 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 Ah! 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 Blah! 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 You're idiots! Blah! 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 I refuse to do business! At the outer court! Blah! 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 I, Johnny, I, Johnny! Blah! 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 I refuse to shallow crime! Blah! Blah! I am, I am, I am! Blah! 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 Draw your sentence! Blah! Blah! Yeah! Yeah! Do you understand me? Blah! Blah! I am, I am! Blah! 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 I am, I am! I am, I am! Poro, podo, podo, podo! Uh! You know, 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 know! Blah! 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 Ah! 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 Yeah! 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 If I don't go there, I'll die! Oh yeah! Like that, oh! Blah! Blah! Yeah! 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 Blah! 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 I encountered desperate life! Blah! 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 Yeah! 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 For I cannot go like this! Pannonioli! Blah! 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 Brother, Johnny! Blah! Aw, aw, aw! 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 I cannot go like this! Blah! Blah! My life cannot remain the same! After this speech! Blah! Blah! I resist not to blow! Blah! Blah! I say no! Blah! Blah! I'm Jacob Resto! Blah! He's a restful! He's a wolf! Blah! 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 If you don't win the wolf! You cannot prevail! Blah! Blah! Yeah! Yeah! Brother, Johnny, Johnny! You must win the wolf! Blah! 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 Yeah! Ah! 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 Blah! In Jesus' name! In Jesus' name! The first thing that God is going to be doing, I saw that what God wants to do is that He wants to open up the walls of the intercession of men. Some of you here, yeah, but after you've been no more strong in the place of prayer. That's why you cannot go like this! The walls of your intercession must be opened! Enough of fifteen minutes, you are tired! I hear you, me! You are going to wash the Holy Ghost! The walls of my intercession, see it open! I hear you, me! Rabus! Peleia! Rebus! Valia! Goro, Kaka, Elepel! The walls of my of my intercession, see it open! See it open! Rapapai! Pepe, pepe! Pepe, pepe! Pepe, pepe! Blah! 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 Pa, pa! Pa, pa! Pa, pa! Pa, pa! Brother, pray! Pa, pa, pa! Pa, pa, pa! Pa, pa, pa! Pa, pa, pa! Ah! Ah! Blah, blah! Blah, blah! Blah, blah! Blah, blah! Brother, you must pray! They are! Bro! Ela, ela, ela! Ela! In Jesus' name! In Jesus' name! In Jesus' name! Do you know that before Jacob had an encounter, there was something that he did? He sent his family away! He went in form of destruction! I hear you, me! He sent them away! You must get away in form of destruction! God must encounter you tonight! I see some of you, there is a heavy thing that God wants to do! But I tell you, you cannot be it! The only way to be it is to allow the Holy Ghost to me! Whatever God is going to pour on your vessel will be a waste! It will be a waste! Ah! 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 Yeah! Blah! Yeah! Ah! 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 Blah, blah! Blah, blah! Yeah! See it open! Blah! Blah! Yeah! Blah! Yeah! 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 Bye! In Jesus' name! In Jesus' name! You are going to wash somebody! When I say wash somebody, wash somebody! When we hold our hands, there is a formation in the spirit! I hear you, me! You are going to wash somebody! And we are going to cry several times! Holy Ghost! See it open! The walls of my intercession! Open! Can you hear me? Wash somebody! Finish all several times! Holy Ghost! See it open! Brother, it's not open! See it open! I cannot hear you! You next up, you mother, cry out! For your crying possession! Caius! 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 Number one! Hey! If you don't cry out, not you will! If you don't cry out, and as I said, if I die, I die! If I perish, I perish! You're going to pay for it! If I die, to die, die! For the walls of my intercession! Let it turn up! Number two! And in death of your soul, you cry out, you do your use! Open up! The walls of my intercession! Number three! See the cry outs! Number four! Kala, 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 kala! Kala, kala, kala! Super Godus! Number five! Gorus! Peleia! Peleia! Mama sis! This is the last one! Die of whip of groan! It must be turned up! And it counted the seven of Pannonioli, God! Can I see them pray? Lepannonioli, God! Raku, podo, podo, podo! Yeah! 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 I cannot go like this! Holy Ghost, I Lepannonioli! Ah! 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 Wah! 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 Yeah! Blah! 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 Can I see desperate life? Blah! 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 Yeah! Yeah! Blah! 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 Yeah! See it pass! See it pass, can we touch?
[457.14]
Is, is a refiner's fire in the pot of flame. I saw it. It came in the form of somebody, but the person is not interested. Hey, brother, you have to finish. However, you want to cry out, cry out. However, you want to enter. Walk off and hide the angel. I'm telling you, Jesus, I am serious. Tell me, Jesus, you can not go back with this ghost. I am serious, I am serious. And come to me, and come to me. Brother, 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 cry out. Where is that brother? Brother, cry out. What? Where is that sister? Sister, cry out. You need an echo. Boy, 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 boy. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. In one minute, you will cry out on the angels. Sit your clothes upon my heart. Are you hearing me? What you need in the city not the clothes or fire upon your heart. You need a city. That fire more rest for you. That fire more, more shina. You are going to cry out. Sit your clothes upon my heart. Three times I will cry out. Number one. The way you are crying. The way you are crying. You can't drop that clothes. Sister, open your mouth and cry out. Sit your clothes upon my heart. I am tired, I am tired. Number two. Kalakala, kalakala. The angel is still moving. This parry goes. They want to sit clothes upon the earth, upon the earth of mess. In Jesus' name. After the last one. We call him down to the earth. Sit your clothes, sit your clothes. Upon my hearts. My back tears. In one minute, cry out, cry out. In Jesus' name we are praying. In Jesus' name we are praying. You can have your seats for your name. Ush us up very fast. Get them to their seats. Please, have your seat very fast. They are going to take this song. I need a backup. They are going to take this song. All over the world, the spirit is moving. All over the world, as a prophecy should be. All over the world, there is a mighty revelation. At the glory of the Lord. As a prophecy should be. All over the world, the spirit is moving. All over the world, as a prophecy should be. All over the world, there is a mighty revelation. At the glory of the Lord. As the water covers the sea. All over the world, the spirit is moving. All over the world, as a prophecy should be. All over the world, as the water covers the sea. All over the world, the spirit is moving. All over the world, as a prophecy should be. There is a mighty, there is a mighty revelation, revelation. At the glory of, at the glory of the Lord. As the waters cover us, he said, glory. All over the waters, he said, glory. All over the world. All over the world, there is a mighty revelation. At the glory of the Lord. Cry out glory. As the waters cover the sea. One more time. All over the world. All over the world, as a prophecy should be. All over the world, there is a mighty revelation. At the glory of the Lord. As the waters cover the sea. In Jesus' name. Ratoria falaas. Rinuma salia. Returia cura. Sami kabi, kabi, kabi. Walialalalalalalal. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. There is a mighty revelation. The team. The team of this special meeting is divine encounter. When I saw the team, I knew that. Heaven, I'm not here to pray tonight. They are not here to play with the arm, arm. There is already a staring. There is already a staring in my soul. Hey, men and brethren, you can't go back remaining the same way you came. It's not possible. Do you know what is divine encounter? Do you know what is divine encounter? Some of you, in Jesus' name. What will happen to you in this meeting? In five years' time, you will live with it. Are you hearing me? In ten years' time, you are going to live with it. You are going to live with it. I, the first time I had an encounter with our daddy was in Bayasa. In Bayasa. Ethio. Ethio. Figuring this would trick. I was living a very bizarre life. I was giving myself to prayers. In fact, I don't attend meetings. I'm careful, I'm very careful, so that I will not be polluted. But when the man of God came, he preached, he preached at a place we call Demptation Square. Look at Demptation Square. Look at my house. I did not plan to go for that meeting. But in my room, I was praying as usual, I was praying. I was hearing a man talking so much about priesthood. He was a fascinating on priesthood. I got interested, I got interested. Who is this man? I was hearing him from my house. And I decided, I said, let me go and check. Let me go and check, let me know what is happening here. I was hearing, I could not, I could not speak, I could not speak to. The pressure was, was so heavy. I entered the place, I entered. After that meeting, I was sitting at the second row. He came at the second row, I said. There is a man God wants to encounter in this place. He came to that row and touched me. I fell, I said, I was standing on the other, am I a man? I'm not a man, he said, there is a man that God wants to encounter. Why, why is he, why do you now come and touch him? Am I a man? I just, but after that touching. After that touching, till this day, my life never remained the same. It was total full. Praise God. After that touching, the only God began to minister to me. You have to find this man. You have to submit under him. You have to sit under him. And I left it, I left it, I was leaving my life, leaving my life. I was, I'm going to tell the story very, very quick and enter to my push. What I'm telling this story is that this evening, Holy Ghost called and said to encounter me. I'm telling you, the kind of encounter you receive in this meeting. Ten years' time, you will tell this story. Some of you, it will be an encounter that will bring a prophetic shift into your destiny. You are confused. You are confused about your life and destiny. You are confused. But after this meeting, you are going to receive a clarification. After that meeting, the only God began to tell little things about my destiny. I was not confused. He began to pattern my life. He began to pattern my life. In Jesus' name. You, after this meeting, to ensure that you don't live here like this. Ensure that you don't live here like this. Ensure that the host of heaven encounters you. Ensure that the host of heaven encounters you. The team is divine encounter. Divine. Kalas, vasuta palia. Kalus, rokotospilia. Ratoria. Can there be a projection of scriptures? Is it possible, sir? Yes, sir, can there be a projection of scriptures? So, we are going to roll with the speed of light. Praise God. When this thing came, I began to ask divine encounter. I wanted to analyze the scripture, the scripture. I want to know divine encounter, which man has God encountered in the Bible? What was the protocol? I'm interested to know. In Jesus' name. Quickly, kalisuprakatai. We are going to read about a man that is called Jacob. Jacob. Let's open our Bible to the book of Genesis thirty-two, verse twenty-three. You can project the scriptures for me very fast. Genesis thirty-two, twenty-three. The Bible says, the title of my topic is what I call, "Pro the power of divine encounter." Pro the power of divine encounter. Genesis thirty-two, twenty-three. And let's start from twenty-two, please. Twenty-two. And he rose up that night and took his two wives and his two sons. And his two women servant and his eleven sons and passed over the ford Jabok. Proceed, sir. And he took them, that is, and Jacob took them and sent them over the brook. And sent over that he had. Praise God. Follow me, follow me. Ensure that your mind and your spirit, everything is trapping it. The Bible said, "And Jacob took them and sent them over the brook." One of the protocol, one of the key two, the key two for an encounter is focus. Are you hearing me? Jacob tried as much as he can to remove all the possible distractions that will prevent him from encountering the Holy One. He said that he sent them over to the brook and sent over daddy that he had. Some of you, if the Holy Ghost, if God was encountering this meeting, you must pay focus. Are you hearing me? The key two for divine encounter is focus. That somebody can be sitting close to you. That you can be sitting here physically, but you are not here. You are not here, I can be sitting with you, but I'm not with you. There is a realm that I am in. It's called the realm of ascension. Focus. You must shed off every form of distraction. The key two for divine, you cannot be everywhere, you cannot be distracted and expect God to encounter you. You must be focused. You must gather yourself together and talk, oh, tonight is tonight. You can be sitting closely, everyone here are not the same. We are not here for the same purpose. Some of you, this meeting, ten years of your time, you are going to be running with this meeting. But some persons here, they came, they just call us here, apostle, this face. Let me come and see, I'll be hearing about this man. It's left for you to choose, and I want to let you know that there is no true destiny that is the same. That is why you have to learn the art of focus. For an encounter is focus, focus. Rakush kapama kapai. Yes, proceed, sir, twenty-four. Ratas. And Jacob was left alone and he arrested a man with him until the breaking of the day. Jacob was left alone and he arrested. An encounter is not, is not for men that are doing the spirit. Jacob knew what he wanted. He was not here for joke. He was here for serious business. He came, he came and he arrested a man. He came, because he came with the mind of when he was wrestling. That was why the man that came to encounter him had to arrest him. Because he did not come, he did not come to pray. He came and told God to dance today. Is he there, he encounter me or he encounter me? I'm not here for serio, I'm here for serious business. I'm here with impertunity. I'm not here to joke. And Jacob arrested, I was wrestling. Before a man encounters God, sometimes, heaven with you, the angels with you encounter can come to you, sir. But they will come to your spirit is dull. They are asking, does this man knows that I, I am here to encounter him? Possibly, no. They are saying, take, take, take. They are trying to force you. But there is no precipitation in your spirit. There is no hunger, there is no precipitation, there is no calcification. Your spirit is very dull. I know what I'm saying. Some of you, the reason why you are still the place you are is that you are dull. There is a heart that traps things in the spirit. There is something that our fathers said, that a man that gets things from God must learn the art of brewing it, brewing it. His heart, his heart to break. The fountain is hard to break. But you are not giving up. There is nothing like no for a, for a man that can trap, that will trap the glory of. Can somebody hear me? There is nothing like no, son of God. The man knows the art of brewing it. See, a brewing, God cannot pass you by. I was listening to one of our papa's message. He said that he came for a program. Out for a program and leave the same way he came. That was his pattern. You have been going for program, progress of programs, progress of a program. You have been living the same way you came. Learn the art of impossibility. There is a heart, it takes you a counter God. I saw some of us, they are praying. I, I saw, heaven's, the boots, the boots is for you. But your heart is dull, dull. Some of you, angels, heaven standing in your front, they are saying, take, take, take. But you can't collect. You are too wicked, the spirit. A man that must encounter God must learn the art of brewing it. Estas said, if I die, I die. It's that kind of heart. If I perish, I perish. And Jacob wrestled with God, we are going to get there. He did not stop. He only stopped where the heart power. I go toward him and towers prevail. Now you have power with God and with men. A man that have learned the art of brewing cannot stop. Oh, see, you get power, oh, see, you get power with God and with men. Are you hearing me? A man that have learned the art of impossibility. It's as if you are cracking, you are cracking, the fountain is not opening. But they are saying, today is today. That is even a mindset of prayer. That is a mindset you used to come. You must learn the art of brewing it. And say something and minister to someone. Because the only God is said to encounter you. But there is a heart, you must sustain a man of God. Rakasukapaliafapuukapai. I enter, I put myself. Let me tell you, a man that have learned the art of brewing it, it's possible that this meeting, your name was not written among those that will be encountered. But because you are a man of impossibility, you can't go for a program and live the same. Probably, they are, they are coming here to encounter somebody. But you block the angel and tell the angel, I am here, I cannot go like this. Probably, a man that have learned the art of brewing it, heaven, angels of your package can come and they are saying, take, you are not collecting. But a man that have learned the art of brewing enters, enters and, and gathers everything to himself. Can you hear me? Let's proceed. And when he saw, kalakala, die, he prevailed not against him. The Bible says, wash me, wash with me. And when he saw, now that he there is the man that wrestled with Jacob. And when the man or the angel saw that him could not prevail against Jacob because of him. The angel saw his persistent heart and saw that he could not prevail against him because of, because of his mouth. He saw, yes, I'm looking at this man, I can't prevail. This man surely prevailed against me because of his hunger. He, and the hollow Jacob's thigh was out of his joint, he was dejointed. Is somebody following me? The angel is trying every possible way to see if this man can let him go. He is trying, let me do something, let me know if this man can let me go. Because the one looking at this man, this man is not here to play, he will hold me down till, till, till the morning. The one looking at this man have to do something. He touched the hollow of Jacob's thigh. Jacob's thigh, it was out of joint and he wrestled with him. When he touched the hollow of his thigh, the man wrestled with him. Proceed, sir. And he shed, and he shed. The angel is crying out. Have you seen such a team? Have you seen such a team? Jacob, eh, stumble on this man, however miss, he refused to let this man go. Allow me to go. For the day break it, why you hold him in ban, oh, you man, Jacob? The day break it, I need to go. And he shed, and he shed, and he said, Jacob said, I will not let you go, never, never, never. I will not let you go, never, never. Jacob said, I am not going to let you go. Is he there, I prevail or I prevail? Are you hearing me? This is the heart, this is the kind of heart that an encounter is called. Is he there, I prevail or I watch, I prevail? I will not let you go, it's not possible. I will not let you go. Some of you need to sustain that kind of heart this evening. Some of you are looking at me, but when I look at you in the spirit, your heart is dull, dull, dull. You can't trap something that way, sister. The way you are, you can't trap something that way. You need an heart of impossibility. Some of you, if it was you that this angel wrestled with you and the angel said, let me go, you will run and leave the angel. I will not let you go, never. Esent, esentare, come to me, I will not let you go. Proceed, sir. And he said unto him, what is thy name? And he said, Jacob. I'm going to do a small diversion here. There was a hindrance here. Are you hearing me? In asma, I'm talking about the protocol and the key two for an encounter. But it came here, I saw a hindrance. Do you know the hindrance I saw? It's a life of sin. He has lived in deception. He has lived in deception. And he said, what is thy name? He said, Jacob. How come you are not Jacob? For he took the identity of Israel. He said, now, your name is Jacob, but the last time, me and angel, I'm confused. Are you Israel or are you Jacob? Who are you exactly? A life of sin. There was a hindrance and the hindrance here is a life of sin. Now, let me tell you. When I was leading prayer, I say something. Some of us came here to encounter the glory, kalakala. You came here to encounter the power. But can I tell you the truth? You cannot enter the glory realm without an encounter with the spirit of holiness. Are you hearing me? You can't pass that gate. There is something that the Bible says. It says that in the book of Corinthians, it says, we grow that we may be clothed. What I'm saying in this is that when we come to pray, when we come to the place of prayer, your prayer has not started doing anything. The first thing that is doing is a purging process. When we cry for ascension, you cannot quickly ascend, you cannot enter that glory realm. There is need for a purification. Do you know what it takes to carry the glory of God? Do you know what it takes to carry the glory of God? There is need for a pushing. There is need for, hey, there is need for the sitting of clothes. Do you know, our generation has been deceived. We are being deceived that we are so much interested in the glory. We are not interested in the holiness. Are you hearing me? You want to carry glory here, apostle, do. Apostles, this coming. Glory, if I ask some of you, I don't know, if I ask you, you will not tell me the truth. But God has searched your heart, he has searched your heart and said that you actually came here for his glory and not his life. You came here for power, you came here for manifestation. You came here for man too, but you did not come here for life. You did not come here. The holiness of God is the nature of God. We are, our generation, we are living in so much deception. We are living in deception. We are so much interested in the manifestation. There is something that this man said in one of his book, Ian Bar. He said, there is a making of man that God uses. Are you hearing me? God, ha, who the gods. Let somebody hear me tonight and roll with this encounter. Our generation is so much interested in. I have a call, send me. You have a call, yes. But it is not first of all sending, it is first of all making. It is first of all making. There is a making of man that God uses. Without submitting yourself to the making process, you will misrepresent God. Some of you, you are too quick to start a ministry. Do you know what ministry is? Do you know whom you are about to represent? Do you know whom you are representing? If you read the account of the apostles, you will saw that this man, there was a conviction, there was a, a level of intimacy and fellowship. There was a level of intimacy and fellowship that they subjected themselves into. They subjected themselves into, that they were able to properly represent God till the very end. A man like Paul said, I have finished my course. I have run the rest. Now, let me tell you. Hear me and hear me well. Without submitting yourself to the making process of the Holy Ghost, you can't represent God, you will embarrass. Why do I say so? There is something that kiss a man and what kiss a man is the level of your conviction. All you evangelists, all you pastor, what is your conviction? What do you do apart coach? That if they present a coin in your face, you will be ready to die for him. There was something that he had knew something. That even if in, that even in the face of death, it does not matter to them. There was a level of conviction. But our generation don't have that kind of conviction. All you represent are God. Kalafasuriah kaliba noskumbandan de. Walaskitos. What is your conviction? Without conviction, one day you will backslide. One day you ask yourself the question, this one prayer. How much have you had to my account? Are you hearing me? Without conviction, one day you ask yourself this prayer and study the Bible, what has it done to my life? Not seeing what God is doing. I was, I was telling every one of our petters. I said that some of one of the first papers of prayer is that what? The kingdom of God should come. Your need is the least, your need is the least form of vision while we pray. Hear me and hear me well. Some of you, you came here, you are wondering, you are seeing that this way they are creating everything, they are going, pa, pa, pa. What are they asking for, what are they praying like, they are confused. You need to know the essence of prayer. Can you hear me? Follow the essence and the vision while we pray. Is thy, thy kingdom come? Of God is that the earth will be a representation of what the heaven captures. Are you hearing me? If, if you have listened, if you normally listen to our Father very well, you, you normally, you, you can hear him. See something, this prayer that we are doing, is they training him. We are not in. Our intention is to continue. That is why we come, we pray, we cry. We try to cry in our soul is a pang of glory. It's a pang and it's a cry for the internal purposes of God. Thy kingdom come. Kalas talish, kuruskupurukupukupala kataos, fasar, fasar. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. The mind of God, the heart of the Father, is that his will will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And he has set us, he has washed men. He has set us as gatekeeper. There are nations yet to be conquered. You are seated under the sound of my voice without intercession, without prayer, nothing. It, the realm of the spirit responds to men with higher priesthood. Are you hearing me? It means that if the priesthood of darkness is, is sin, immorality, is the most predominant in this territory, is simply napa. So, oh, you are seated under the sound of my voice. It's a call of awakening, lakus, telephilia, palapalia. Nothing can happen until next, the essence, we give ourselves to prayer. Let's proceed, the next verse. And he said, thy name shall be called no more Jacob. But is you, there is a renaming. For as a prince, hast thou power with God and with men? For as a prince, for as a prince, you have power with God and with men and as prevailed. Jacob rescued, he rescued until he prevailed. And the angel, he saw. One of the proof of an encounter here, there is a renaming. You can't, after this meeting, you can't, you can't remain like this. Are you hearing me? The proof of an encounter is not that you are physically present, is that your life changes. It's like, is that after here, your prayer life, your Bible study life, receive a shift. You begin to use yourself to the demand of your destiny. There was a renaming. The angel told Jacob from Nighens fort, thy name shall not. I was, now, let me tell you. Do you know the reason? Why it's as if there are many warfare in your life? There is one contention that the devil is after. And do you know the contention? Is a battle of throne and dominion. Are you hearing me? The reason why devil can, you are struggling with one, that addiction. You are struggling with loss. You have tried devil by all means, he want to bring you down. It's because of throne, it's because of dominion. Let me tell you the truth. There are some things that are unredemable. Are you hearing me? We pray so that we can pray. We obey God so that when it matters the most, we can be yielded. Are you hearing me? The reason why the enemy is not allowing you to pray. The reason why the enemy is not allowing to, you to the holiness of God is because he knows that if you continue in this path of sin, you will make a destined mistake. And somebody hear me, I'm trying to make a point. The reason why he can't stop you from worship pornography. The reason why he, he does not want to stop you from worship, for watching a kind of movie that, they did not do anything, but they did everything. They did not do it. That's the deception of it, nothing happened. But they have done everything. The reason why the enemy will not allow you to stop worship and keep deceiving you is that, is a battle of throne and contention. Sometimes, I used to tell people, you have to be aware of some things. I ask myself, what is the iniquity of my family? What is the iniquity of the territory? Are you hearing me? There are some question that you must ask yourself. If you don't ask yourself, you, you will become a prayer. You will become a prayer. Satan is, is using the same tool, in the same pattern. There are some things that if you don't know, the same thing he use for A, the same thing he use for you. His essence is throne and dominion. If you can't prevail over the iniquity of the territory. If you can't prevail over the sin of immorality. You see, Ba, when we talk about throne, when we talk about dominion, forget about it. I say something, there is something that you need to know. The judgment of a territory, the judgment of this territory will never allow a man that is bound with the iniquity of the territory to lord over it. It's a battle of throne and dominion. And if you are bound with the iniquity of this territory, you cannot lord over it, it's not possible. Are you hearing me? All you man of God, all you men and brethren, you must be aware, you must be well-oaked. You must kind up your lunch. If you cannot prevail over the iniquity of the territory. You see, that throne and dominion, I'm not saying that you will not be used, are you hearing me? But there are measures. Two state for it, that somewhere like Virgin Mary, she was no longer ever, she can still be a, she will make heaven. Are you understanding me? But you see, that prophecy, she has lost it. She has lost the prophecy. Because the prophecy is with a kind of life. There is an ordination, there is a consecration that is required. She has lost it. The battle is throne and dominion, I tell myself, throne and dominion, I will not lose out. I will not lose out. Are you hearing me? You must, let me tell you, the iniquity of the territory, it must come. And if you're a man of God, they will come in their full intensity with their full force. And God will allow you, because you must be tried. God cannot use a stone that he has not tried. You must be tried and you must prevail. Lasaka lakapala, you must prevail. If you can't prevail, forget about dominion, forget about throne. And some of you, you must have to be careful, because there is no second chance. If you use it once, you'll use it forever. I'm not saying that you will not be used, but even in the Bible, the Bible said that there are different kinds of vessels. There are vessels of gold. There are vessels of silver. There are walls made with hair, you can still be used. Probably it will not be, it will not be a kind of vessel that is made with hair. Do you know what is hair? It will not be a kind of vessel that is, that is made with marble. You can't do much for God, you will make heaven, but you have lost it. Your throne has been taken, men are brave. I want to change. There is something that Dr. Paul Natcha said. He said, if you live in this world without a battle consciousness, you will die like a chicken. I want to change our perspective. I was, I was saying something. Some of us don't know who, in as much as, yes, devil is powerless. Devil is powerless. But one of his two is deception. Are you hearing me? If he can deceive Adam and Eve, do you know who Adam is? Adam is a man that name everything. He was very wise though. If he can deceive Adam and Eve, who are you to say that he cannot deceive you? That is the deception of our dispensation. The devil will succeed in telling you that. Even if you continue lying, you can still be used. Now that you lied, did you lose anything? You still walk in power, you still pray and people prayed. Nothing happened. The deception of the devil is that men will continue in sin. Men will continue in shit and in their mind, nothing is happening. But you are, there is something that, that our daddy said, that there is nothing like darkness in the spirit. Are you hearing me? Is either you are growing upwards or you are growing backward? Are you hearing me? Is either you are growing? Is either you are transforming or you are conforming to the pattern of the world? There is nothing like I'm in one place. Bible say, you are neither cold or, is either you are cold or you are hot. There is nothing like, you can't be confused. Is either you are cold or you are hot? So, we must be aware, we must be aware of the deception of the devil. I was trying to explain the problem here. The problem here is sin. God can encounter in this place. But if you continue in a life of sin, you will lose that encounter. You will lose that encounter. And for some of you that is here, one of the things that the devil can use to hold you back is a life of sin. But you must insist and persist. You are brought with a price. Kalas, talish. Let's proceed, the next verse. Verse 29. And Jacob asked him and said, tell me, I pray to thy name. And he said, wherefore is it that thou dost ask after my name? And he blessed him then. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. And he blessed him then. Is either God encounters you in this meeting, or he does what? Is either he encounters you or he encounters you? I've talked about focus. The key to of encounter, I've talked about persistence. If a man must have an encounter, you must learn the art of persistence. I've talked about, you must learn the art of praying. Teleportion and desperation. Praise God. Open for look to the book of Matthew, chapter 5 verses. Matthew, chapter 5 verses. The Bible said, bless a day who is too hungry and tastes after righteous men, for they shall be food. Another protocol of encounter is hunger and tests. Praise God. Hunger and tests. Hunger is a desperate cry in your heart that comes from a heart of dissatisfaction. It goes from a heart of dissatisfaction, a desperate cry. Hunger and test. Bless our, the Bible said, bless our, how appear you? Who hunger and tastes after righteous men, for they shall be food. One of the protocol of encounter is hunger and desperation. If you must say cantagun, there must be a, a pang, a desperate cry, a pang in your soul, a desperate cry. That is, bless our, from the heart of dissatisfaction. A heart of dissatisfaction. I can't go like this, heaven must encounter me. I can't live like this, heaven must encounter me. The third protocol of encounter is repentance of and humility. I've mentioned about it. I've mentioned about it. You cannot encounter the glory room without, without encountering the holiness of God, you can't pass the gates. Are you hearing me? The gate to the glory room is an encounter with the spirit of holiness. I've said that the problem with our generation is that we want to encounter the glory, the glory room. We want the power. We want the euphoria that come from being anointed. We want it, but we don't want an encounter with the spirit of holiness. We want to encounter the glory. We want to be used by God, but we are not ready to change our ways. Repentance and humility. You must change your wish. If you must encounter the glory room, there is a garment that must be torn. That garment of iniquity, I've shown that that when Jacob, when the angel wanted to encounter Jacob, there was a limitation, he asked him, all you man, what is thy name? Because I'm confused, I don't know your name. Are you Jacob or are you so? Repentance and humility. If you must encounter the glory room, you must be subjected to the spirit of holiness. The spirit of holiness. Now, there, in the presence of God, and there is a sanctification that is required from the priest. Praise God. The group of them must work together. Are you hearing me? It's not one. Some of you have been trained by your discipline. By your mission. By your mission. By your mission. But you have seen that the more you try, the more you fail. What you need is an encounter with the spirit of holiness. It's not just by discipline. You need an encounter. Heaven need to sit their clothes upon your hearts. There is a sanctifying presence of God. There is a sanctifying presence of God. You must encounter the spirit of holiness. So in this meeting, you can live here. Heaven must sit their clothes upon your hearts. There is a purging and sanctifying process that must be done. If you must encounter God's repentance and humility, if an encounter must be sustained, it requires a life of holiness. Without holiness, none can praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. You must submit yourself, subject yourself to the sanctifying presence of God. There is no glory. There is no glory, there is no genuine glory without an encounter with the spirit of holiness. All the best you can receive is gifts. But when we talk about the glory, the pillar of the ark of God, the part where you can't bypass holiness. Are you hearing me? You can't bypass holiness and grab the glory, it's not possible. There is a vessel that can carry the glory of God. It's not any kind of vessel. If it is an encounter with the glory that you came for, you must subject yourself to the spirit of holiness. There is a purging and sanctifying process that can be done. If you don't subject yourself, you can't bear, you can't bear. You cannot bear it. You lack the ability to bear. Even if heaven pours their glory upon you, it will leak out. Because of life of sin, you can't sustain that glory. There is a kind of vessel that carries the glory of God. Do you want to be that kind of vessel that you call me? It's a sin you receive more. But when you step out, a life of sin takes it away from you. It drains you. You must encounter the spirit of holiness. You must encounter the spirit of holiness. Now, I'm going to talk about one more thing. How to preserve divine encounters? Open for me the book of 2 Corinthians, chapter 3, verse 18. 2 Corinthians 3, verse 18. "But we all with open face beholden us in a glass; the glory of the Lord hath changed into the same image, from glory to glory, even after by the Spirit of the Lord." How to preserve divine encounter? Is persistent prayer and intercession. Number one. Persistent prayer and intercession. Whatever God is going to release in this meeting, without giving yourself to a life of persistent prayer and intercession, you can't sustain it. How to sustain an encounter? Is persistent prayer. The Bible says, "But we all with open face beholden us in a glass; hath changed into the same image, from glory to glory, as we behold we are formed." I say something. We pray so that we can pray. You can't receive an encounter and you go back. You are not subjecting yourself to the things that keeps the encounter. You must subject yourself to a life of prayer. Consistent persistent prayer and intercession. Backed up with the spirit of grace and supplication. Some of us have to learn the art of prayer. The unigus quickens us. But let me tell us the truth. The spirit of grace and supplication does not require that by all means, it will happen in ease. Are you hearing me? Sometimes you find out that you are tired. But after one hour of persistence in prayer, it's a sin something came upon you. You thought was tired, you don't know how the quickness will rested upon you. You were able to persist for hours, two hours, three hours, you are still there. Persistence. You must learn the art of importunity. Nothing is happening in persistent prayer. You must pray. I say something that the reason why we pray is for training. Whether there is a reason to pray or there is no reason to pray, you subject yourself to prayers. Persistent prayer. Whether you are happy, whether you are sad, whether you feel like it or you don't feel like it, you subject yourself to it. In fact, you should even pray more when you don't feel like it. You don't feel like praying, but the demand is that if you must sustain, if you must carry the glory, and if you must sustain the glory, you must learn the art of persistent prayer. Persistent prayer. Persistent prayer. That was the apostle caution. The Bible says, the book of Acts, it says, "And they gave themselves to the ministry of prayer and intercession." They never stop. They never stop. For everything that they did, for all the territories that they won, for their nature of growth and increase is by prayers. But our generation, we don't want to pray. We want to carry the glory, but we don't want to pray. Every time you are complaining, you are tired. But the Bible says that you have been surrounded with great cloud of weaknesses. You have no excuse. All you men, you are inexcusable. The apostles subjected themselves to the ministry of prayers and intercession. There was never a day they gave excuse. Have you seen a place in the Bible and they say that and they were tired and today they all slept? I know, let me tell you the truth. Something happened to the apostles after they encountered the spirit. Something happened to them. Someone like Peter, James, and John, they were all struggling. They could not watch with you for an hour. They were struggling, they could not pray. Inasmuch as they were witnessing for God, the Bible says that they went out two by two and they came back with testimonies. They were doing it, but something happened to them after they encountered the spirit. After the power and the glory rested upon them. All through the, after the spirit rested upon them. It is that spirit that they gave, they gave themselves to that spirit until the very end. Are you hearing me? It's not just enough for heaven to... Someone is hearing me. It's not just enough for heaven to encounter you. You must subject yourself to a life of prayer. When you feel like it, when you don't feel like it, you subject yourself to a life of prayer. Without it, you can't preserve what you have received. It will leak out. We must subject ourselves to persistent prayer. I just hope that someone is hearing me. I'm not preaching. So that you can hear, just go and preach it so that you can live here and start acting by it. That after tonight's meeting, it will not just end in tonight. It will not just end in this hour. But you will go back. One hour you subject yourself, two hours you subject yourself. There is a demand, there is a demand. What you encounter in this meeting is not once and for all for your destiny. It's an encounter so that you can journey. It's an encounter that will enable you to journey toward destiny. Are you hearing me? It's not once and for all. So after this meeting, let this meeting not just end here. Go back. Subject yourself. Subject yourself to the demand. Subject yourself to the levels of your destiny. You are here so that you can be empowered to level. Heaven has been demanding from you two hours of your nights. Two hours of your prayer. But after tonight, you will be an empowerment. The empowerment is not to go back in your struggle. The empowerment is to go back. You sit in the place of stories. Is to go back. You sit in the place of prayer. Don't live here and be a storyteller. Don't live here and all your stories that I met with a posse do. Don't live here and all your stories that I saw in face to face. Don't live here and all your stories that in that meeting, I was even in the front seat. To what we shall encounter, what we serve encounter. Oh, men and brethren, hear me and hear me well. You must subject yourself to what we shall encounter. Persistent, this is to encounter you. I know about the spirit of grace and supplication. Some of you will live here with angels or prayers, with angels or visions. That when you begin to pray your night watches, you will realize that you are not... There is a finalization. You don't know what is happening to you. You will still be saying, "I am not done with you," is something like that. You will go here with the baptism of the spirit of prayer. You will go here with the baptism. Or you go with me. Some of you, you are going to encounter. You are going to encounter the angels or angels or stories you that can sit for half. After it for five hours, the unigus say, "I am not yet done." There is yet another choice, there is yet a revelation. I want to show you, I want to show you. You are going to go here, come on, nice. What I'm going to receive in this meeting, shall be present. This meeting, many years of my life, it shall carry me. Twenty years of my life, I will still be running. Twenty years of my life, I will still be running with the divine encounter that I have in this meeting. All through my life, there will be courage. After, after God encountered the disciple, all through your life, there was a courage. There was a courage. You are here to be empowered, so that you can run. You are here to be empowered. Men and brethren, cry out. Don't mind your neighbor. Not human have this end destination. You need to learn all the laws and the orders. You tell the unigus, "I am here for a serious business." Is either you encounter me or you encounter me? Some of you, you need to learn the art of praying. All you sister and daughters, heaven will encounter you. There are angels. I am here to encounter you. But you are true. There is no peer capacity. You need to cry out. I can only hear this. Is either I, is either I will encounter you? Or I encounter. I am human. I am not. I learn all the laws and the orders. And I cry out. Is either I cry out to spirits? I can see some few that cry. But yeah, I am those that I am to cry. But you say, "I am here for you." "I am here for you, I am here for you." Sister, cry out. Are we not called like this? Are we not called like this? Is either I, I am not. I am not. I learn all the laws and the orders. I am not. I can see a brother crying out. I can see a brother crying out. Is telling the unigus, "Tonight, I am here for a serious business." Come and say, "You tell the brother." Well, you are going to be. The sanctified presence of God. The sanctified presence of God.
Something is burning in the spirit. Plug yourself for the foundation of the heavens. The stone for stations. Oh, Jesus. Amen. Oh. Oh, Jesus. Ah. Ah. I see the heavens open. The portals of a station. The portals of a encounter. Amen. The heavens open. Ah. I see angels descending from heaven. And they are transporting men, they are transporting you. They are transporting you. Look at this, the open there. There is a transport. The portals are open. The portals are open, they are open. Eh! In Jesus. My dear. You can be seated if you can. Oh, carry me, Holy Ghost. Oh, carry me. My destiny is not too heavy, carry me. There is a journey I must embark, carry me, carry me. You must carry me, you. You must carry me, there is a sister crying. You must carry me, you must carry me, you must carry me! Where is the lima? The Lord is providing ladders for men, ladders. I see ladders, I see ladders. Ladders of ascension, I see ladders. I see ladders, I see ladders, I see ladders, I see ladders, I see ladders! Oh, do we have a person here? Only man on the mount of who wins to the heavens. We bring down the dominion of God. The mind of God dwells in the high places. Only man on the mount of God who wins. Carry me. Carry me, Jesus, carry me. Carry me, Jesus. I ask for my ladder, where is my ladder, where is my ladder? I need to ascend. Show me my ladder, show me my ladder. Every man must appear with a ladder. It's time for ascension. You need a ladder, you need a ladder. You need a ladder, the heavens are just putting ladders. Ladders, 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 ladders of ascension. Hallelujah! Oh, oh! 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 Ah ha! Ah ha! For they that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength. There's a mountain we win, says the elders. They that wait we mount up. 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 Oh! Oh, oh! Oh, oh! Oh, oh! Oh, oh! Eh! Oh, Jesus. Carry me! Ladders! Ha 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 ha! Ladders, ladders. Ladders! Ladders, ladders, ladders! Oh, oh, oh! Oh, oh, oh! The Lord is opening the realm of the ladders. It's time for men, it's time for men to ascend. You will no more dwell in the low places. Ascend, ascend the hills of God! In Jesus. Mighty. You can be seated. Oh, oh! Oh, oh! Oh, oh! Oh my God. Ha ha! 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 Ha 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 ha! Transport systems. Vehicles of ascension. There is a courage of the spirit. Hallelujah! Oh my God. Oh my God. Oh my God, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God. Your destiny is calling. You need to be carried there. No human efforts can get you there, you need to be carried. Transport systems from the heavens. They are ferried into time. And God wants to carry men, ferry men to Timases. I see ladders, I see ladders, hey, Jesus. Oh, yo, 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 yo. Oh, yo, yo. Oh, yo. Sister, there are two angels giving you a ladder in the spirit. Take your ladder, ascend. Take your ladder, ascend, sister. Take your ladder! Take your ladder! Ah ha! Oh, yo, 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 yo. Oh, yo, yo, yo. Oh my God. Ah ha! It's a service of encounter. It's a service of encounter. Oh, yo! Oh, yo! Oh, yo! Ha ha ha! You need your ladder. There is a traffic from the heavens. They are waiting for the ladder. They are waiting for the ladder. Heavenly beings are standing and descending. Heavenly angels, you need a ladder, you need your ladder! Oh my God, 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 oh my God! Ha 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 ha! In Jesus. Genesis chapter twenty-eight. Oh, oh! Hallelujah! The distance between where you are and you are encountered is a ladder. Is a ladder, is a ladder. Ha 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 ha! Eh! Is a ladder, is a ladder. Show me my stand. The Lord carried me in the spirit. I'm suddenly seeing that this meeting is not a normal meeting. When you finish this meeting, take this message, take today's session. Put it on, whether you are listening to it, watching it. Leave it for the next seven days. Be watching it, playing it on repeat, if you are sleeping, put it. Ladders. Oh, oh! Ha 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 ha! Oh, carry me. Sorry! Carry me, oh! Ah! Ah! I'm not carrying you. I'm not carrying you. I'm not carrying you! Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Ladders! Ladders, ladders, I see, I see ladders. I see ladders, I see ladders. I see ladders! Fire! Palas! Saria! Baria! Kalidos! In Jesus, listen. You can be seated. Oh, oh! Oh, oh! Hey! There is a place the Lord is taking us. There is a place the Lord is taking us. There is a season opened. There are persons sent to wait for us on the other side, we need a ladder to get there. Oh, oh! They are waiting, they are waiting. Where is my ladder, Holy Ghost? Where is my ladder? There is an encounter waiting, where is my ladder? There is a covenant waiting, where is my ladder, where is my ladder? There is a promise waiting, where is my ladder? There is an inheritance waiting, where is my ladder? I need to get there. There is a cry in the spirit. The heaven is waiting for a new generation of men to rise. But we need a ladder, we need a ladder to get there, we need a ladder! In Jesus, watch. Look at this scripture. Genesis twenty-eight verse ten. Genesis twenty-eight verse ten. A man of destiny, his name is Jacob. A man of destiny. He was whining away in the woods. The things he should pursue are pursuing him, and he was running. Nobody could help him. A man of destiny, his purpose is true, this man is a victim, he's a victim, he's running. He's running. Many of you are sitting here looking normal, but were a man of destiny. The cries of the mortals are within your belly. There is an inspiration of the younger saints that is crying in you, seeking for expression. But there is no encounter, so you ask encounter, you need an encounter! Oh ho. Are you with me? To give context. Hee. Higher. Higher. What will happen to you today, you will not recover, you will not recover from it in ten years, in twenty years. You will be making reference to today. Some of you, till you die, you will make reference to it. Ahah. Oh ho. Oh ho. Aniyo. Put this thing on the head of that young boy. Ahah. Oh ho. Bring it for me, bring it for me. Hold that carefully, hold that carefully. Ahah. I see the wind of the glory of God blowing from this side, blowing from this side, blowing, it's 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 blowing! Oh my God, the, the, the river is crying! Osha, come out, Osha, come out, Osha, come out! Look at that Osha. Osha, come out! Fire! The Holy Ghost! Oh my God, oh my God. Ahaha. It's increasing, it's increasing, it's increasing, it's increasing, it's increasing, it's increasing! Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost! Fire! Higher! Higher! Fire! The Holy Ghost, fire! Fire! Yes, that's it, that's it, fire, 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 fire! Oh ho. Oshas, don't touch anybody under power on the ground, if you can find a sitter, if you can't sitter, just stay close to the wall. Stand, stand, stand close to the wall, don't disturb these guys. A man of destiny is a normal man. He was roaming around, meanwhile, he was carrying a covenant. Until an encounter came, he was normal. The things he should rule over was ruling over him, until an encounter came. Leave him, hey, hey, come on, come on. Oh ho. You can't carry greatness and be normal. You need an encounter to activate, to separate, to stop you out! Your destiny does not capture you, but you need an encounter! Don't worry, don't stop there, don't stop. Tonight is the night of encounter! If I don't set a sit around and leave them. Aniyo. Higher. Oh my God, oh my God. Oh my God, oh my God. Oh my God. Oh my God, oh my God, oh my God. Hey! I'm blessed. If you are with me, say amen. You can be seated. And charged him and said unto him, Thou shalt not take a wife of the daughters of Canaan. You can be seated. Arise, quoth Patanaram, to the house of Betua, thy mother's father, and take thee a wife, and take thee a wife from thence of the daughters of Laban, thy mother's brother. And God Almighty blessed thee, are you with me here? What did you notice is happening here? There was a patraka transfer. There was a patraka transfer. And God Almighty blessed thee and made thee fruit. Who are they, who are they talking about? And give thee the blessing, the blessing, not blessings. They have given it some blessings. But this one is the blessing. The blessing is the patraka ono, the blessing. And give thee the blessing of Abraham to thee and to thy seed with thee, that thou mayest inherit the land wherein thou art a stranger. Which God gave unto Abraham. And Isaac sent away Jacob, and he went to Patanaram unto Laban, son of Betua, the Syrian, the brother of Rebecca, Jacob's and Issa's mother. Are you with me? If you are with me, say amen. And sent him away to Patanaram to take a wife from thence, and that as he blessed him, he gave him a charge, saying, Thou shalt not take a wife out of the daughters of Canaan. And that Jacob obeyed his father and his mother, and was gone to Patanaram. And Issa, seeing that the daughters of Canaan pleased not Isaac his father, then went unto Ishmael, and took unto, and took unto the wives which he had, Mahalat, the daughter of Ishmael, Abraham's son, and the sister of Nebuchadnezzar, to be his wife. If you are with me so far, say amen. Let me explain further. Jacob came to a point in his life when Isaac released on him the patraka blessing. He didn't even release it on him only, he released it on his seed. I was thinking because of that man's destiny, that as soon as he's appeared, everything will obey him. It's not true. He suddenly became a victim of something he should conquer. And Jacob went out from Beersheba and went toward Haran. Though he had a blessing, though he know what he should be, it has not opened. There is no recognition in the realm of the spirit. It's like what happened to Moses. He had a story that there is a prophecy over his life, there is prophecy over me, so he had this story. Bro! That there is a prophecy over him. So he came out and probably sang a song, there is prophecy over me. I cannot fail, ah, you will fail without an encounter. There is no willpower that can get a man there. There is no personal decision that can get a man there. Wishes can't get you there. You need what? So Moses appeared and said, and killed the Egyptian, you remember the story now? The thing didn't cause any trouble until he killed an Israelite. Or he came to an Israelite and was trying to separate for them, the Israelite look at him and say, who made you king over us? The Bible noted and said that he thought that they should be aware that he is the one that is called to be a prince over them. They know, they know that he's supposed to be a prince over them, but they rejected him, why? No encounter! No encounter! Jacob, he had a story, doesn't mean we are going to bow to you, you need an encounter, until a day came, Moses' land pre-stood. So he was at the backside of the desert. When he was there, he was ministering to the flocks of Jethro. Suddenly, he turned and saw a bush. Fatir! Palas! He saw a bush burning. A bush was burning. A bush burning. The Bible said he stepped aside to see this site, a bush. Hey, you need a burning bush encounter. If not, you can't appear before Pharaoh. He said he turned aside to see this site. He saw the bush burning, but it was not consumed, a burning bush. Out of that burning bush, a voice spoke. And said, Moses, remove your shoes, for where thou standest is what? He never knew that his life is out of alignment. He never knew that the way he's living is not acceptable to his calling and destiny, until he had an encounter, suddenly, heaven demanded holiness from his life. He was just moving, he was even doing a kind of ministry, everything was going, until a day came, he turned aside and saw a bush that burned. When it burned, he looked at it, and a voice spoke from the bush and said, young man, where you're standing is the holy ground. Remove your shoes! Suddenly, he realized that there is a holiness that is demanded from a calling like his own. He thought it was the same with others, you are not the same, there is a demand of God on your life. It takes an encounter for you to know. You can be seated, be seated, be seated. Higher! Oh Jesus. Higher! 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 Oh ho. Oh. If you are with me so far, say amen. I didn't hear you, say amen! Shout amen! You see what is happening here? And the Bible said, he lighted upon a certain place and carried their worship, because the sun was set. And he took of the stones of that place and put them for his pillow, and he lay down in the place to what? Sleep. Let's read verse 12 together, one, two, ready, go! Hallel! You need a ladder. I tell you, you need a ladder. The heavens are not far, all you need is what? A ladder. Oh, 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 oh. Heh, 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 heh. Oh, 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 oh. You need a ladder. You need a ladder, my brother. Listen, are you hearing me? Some of us are somewhere reasonable in our spiritual journey. But if you will get to the next stage, a pastor. You need a... There is something some people don't understand. They think that just because they are in Christ, that everything is accessed, is not accessed at the same plane. Show me Ephesians, chapter 1. Verse 3. We are coming back here. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, Jesus. Higher! Oh my God, it's time to climb to the next plane. It's time to go higher. It's time to go higher, it's time to go higher. It's time to go higher, it's time to go higher. It's time to arise, it's time to go higher! And there are some of you following me online. I bring you the word of the Spirit. It's time to climb high. As the body of Christ, it's time to ascend higher. It's the season of the ladders. Oh, 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 oh. It's the season of the ladders. Ah, 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 ah. Oh, Jesus. Higher! Higher! Oh, 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 oh. Oh, 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 oh. Higher! How do we hold this? Oh, 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 oh. Oh my God. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, Jesus. Oh, Jesus. Oh, Jesus. Oh, Jesus. Higher! It's the season of the ladders. Men about to ascend to the next layer. There is a plane of divine encounters open in the spirit. We need ladders to ascend there, we need ladders. Oh, 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 oh. It's the season of new encounters! May Jesus mighty be seated. This meeting looks like a little meeting, but in the spirit is very high. Make sure you record what I'm saying. As I stood here, I was caught up in the spirit. I was walking in a realm. Whether the realm is on earth, I don't know. Whether it's in heaven, I don't know. But what I saw was an angel. Oh, 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 oh. Ha, 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 ha. Ha, 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 ha. Heh, 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 heh. Heh, 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 heh. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, Jesus. Oh, 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 oh. Higher! 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 Oh, Jesus. Oh, 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 oh. Listen. It seems as if a season is fulfilled in the heavens. So a mighty angel is sent on an assignment. He was equipped, armed. He was armed with an income and a scroll, an ink on and a scroll. And he was told, move through the face of the earth. Pen down the names of men in the seasons that is about to open. The names that heavens approved on that list, they will begin to receive visitations from the heavens. You need a ladder, that's why I'm telling you, you need a ladder. I want you to pray. Lord, give me a ladder to help enter into this realm of encounters, into this realm of visitations, into this realm of encounters. Give me a ladder! Ladders! Oh, 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 oh. Oh, 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 oh. One more minute, Scott. The Lord wants you to ascend into the realm. You need a ladder. The Lord wants you to ascend into the next layer. You need a layer, a ladder. The Lord wants you to ascend into the new season. You need a ladder. There are places in God that he wants you to access. You need a ladder. Emmanuel, you need a ladder. Emmanuel, you need a ladder! Ema, you need a ladder, you need a ladder, you need a ladder, you need a ladder! Oh, 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 oh. Listen, watch. You can be seated. Listen, are you with me? You can be seated. I'm showing you, listen, listen, are you with me? I don't know why God chose this city to bring this insight. But I'm showing you insight into some of the things that God will begin to do in the seasons that is come. Listen, I want to tell you something. Are you with me? Are you with me? How many moons make up a year in the heaven? You can't stay up. Very correct answer. If I ask you how many moons make up a year according to the heavens, you may tell me 12 moons. There are seasons that can open from the realm. And according to the countings of men, it will be up to 18 months. Men are counting 18 months. But 18 months is equal to one year from the heavens. So just because you entered January doesn't mean the year have ended. Just because you are in December doesn't mean the year have ended. The year. The year. Lord, give me my ladder. I think my voice went down or one of the speakers stopped working. Lord, give me my ladder, give me my ladder. Give me my ladder. Somebody help me and check quickly. Lord, give me my ladder, give me my ladder, give me my ladder, give me my ladder. Who is checking now? I'm waiting, oh. When you finish, I continue my teaching. Lord, give me my ladder, everywhere you are, pray for one minute. Amen, Jesus, listen. The Bible said here, "Bless me, the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who have blessed us with all spiritual blessings." With all spiritual blessings, where? So even in Christ, there are places, not one place. Many people entered the layer and stopped. And the heaven is calling. Some of them, they are stretching the ladder to them. "Climb up, my son, climb up. Leave this level, climb up. There is something more, climb up. What you are celebrating is nothing, climb up. There is something deeper, there is something heavier about your calling. You are settling for less. The things you think are something are nothing, climb up." They gave ladder. Some of us are still too occupied with our challenges in the natural, with the distractions of the things that are working or not working, that we ignore the ladder. If you're with me, say amen. I didn't hear your amen, say amen. We are not saying amen, all of us, shout amen. Show me back my Genesis as we begin to round up. "And he dreamed, and behold, a ladder set up upon the earth, and the top of it reached where? Where did he reach? I'm not hearing those sisters. Where did he reach? Ascending and descending on it." Listen. You know, many times people say encounters, I want to see angels, I want, you, you want to see angels, you want heavenly beings. Get a ladder. What is it to attract the traffic of angels? I'm telling you. When you want to start a church, what's the first thing you need? Well, wait, what's the first thing you need to start a church? I know, I know, what is the first thing you need?
Need a ladder.
It's not true, you are, you are answering based on what I'm saying, you need a hall. What's the first thing you need to start a church? I pity your life. That's how some people started ministry and said and babbled their hair. As they are doing the ministry, they are getting old and dying their hair. As they are doing the ministry, they are getting old and dying their hair. As they are doing the ministry, they are getting old and dying, sickness, sickness is afflicting them. You know why? No ladder, no traffic. Suffer me, no ladder, no traffic. Let's say it three times, one, two, ready, go. Again. Again. Let's say it again. I'm not hearing you, louder. Again! Again! What do you need? A traffic, instantly, a traffic. Angels will be, they'll be, they'll be shuffling within themselves to see who will come out first, I'm telling you. You'll be saying, I want to see two angels, if you put ladder, bring ladder, bring, what you need is one! He said ladder. Somebody will ask me and say, Apostle, what's the secret? When you come to meetings, things happen. What do you go with your, are you going with your Bible? Are you going with your protocol? What are you going with? What do you think I'm going with? Oh my God, ask your neighbor, where is your ladder? Shout loud! Where is your ladder? You can be seated. That means, the most important thing a man needs is what? A ladder. Once you have a ladder, there will be traffic. Not just the traffic of angels, the traffic of resources. Not just the traffic of resources, the traffic of inheritance. Not just the traffic of inheritance, the traffic of the voice of God. When we read further, you will see the voice spoke from that place, that means a ladder is, is a, the things that are resident in the heavens, they can be flings up within the vicinity of the ladder, can be co- headed into that encounter. A ladder, a ladder. It's the seasons of the ladders. Every man, when you go to your prayer meeting, when you go to your room, when you go to your compass, when you go to the place of your work, when you go to business, when you travel abroad, everywhere you are, in the US, in UK, everywhere you are, make sure you are with one. When you are playing a keyboard, make sure you are with one, a ladder. No, I'm telling you, if you are just playing drums and playing keyboard, get a ladder! When you play, you set it here, then you are sense of the heavens. As I play, angels will be going and, they'll be going, they'll be coming, they'll be, they'll be going, they'll be coming. What do you have, a keyboard or a ladder?
A ladder.
Ask your neighbor, where is your ladder? Look for five people, ask them, where is your ladder? Look for five people, ask, where is your ladder, where is your ladder? Pastor, where is your ladder? Listen, you can be seated. Listen! What is the length of your ladder? Suffer me, Holy Ghost, help my life, I beg. Help my life, I beg now, I beg! What is this? It's a prayer. It's a prayer. Anyhow you want to, and just run and for me. Anyhow you want to, and just run and for me, just help my life. Oh my God. Listen, next verse. "And behold, I thought it's only angels you are going to see." Hang off angelic encounters, but I want to show you how powerful a ladder is. If a man brings a ladder, pastor, and keep, what will be happening? Angels will be ascending and descending on the ladder. But there is something, at the top of the ladder, suffer me, at the top of the ladder, the Lord himself will sit. The Lord himself, he will sit. Suffer me, I want the full package. After this meeting, people will be carried to the rem of power, to the rem of holiness, to the rem of understanding, to the rem of wisdom, to the rem, to the rem, there are diverse encounters in the spirit. What will happen to you? What will happen to you? Even if Satan appears and say, I sit on your destiny, this encounter will fling Satan away. Let the Lord play you like a swing. Like the swings in the spirit. Let it swing you, let it swing you, let it swing you, let it swing you, let him swing you, let him swing you. Oh my God, oh my God. Listen. "And behold, the Lord stood above it and said," and said what? "I am the Lord God of Abraham thy father and the God of Isaac, the land whereon thy lion to thee will I give it." This is somebody that is running away. Somebody trying to manage life. They are telling him you are owning land, it doesn't make sense. But you need a ladder. When you get a ladder, you will hear things that are bigger than you. Let's see the next verse. "And thy seed shall be as the dust of the earth, and thou shalt spread abroad to the, to the west, and to the east, and to the north, and to the south; and in thee and in thy seed shall all the families of the earth be what? Be what? Next verse. "And behold, I am with thee, and we keep thee in all places whither thou goest; and we bring thee again into this land; for I will not leave thee until I have done that which I have spoken to thee of." I will not leave thee. I will not leave thee until I finish what I've said. I will not leave thee. I will not leave thee. Listen to me, brothers and sisters. Make sure you hold your ladder. Once you are holding your ladder, God will not leave you until he has finished what he said. The only time what God said begins to shake is when you don't have your ladder again. Suffer me, I hold my ladder. Next verse. "And Jacob awakes out of his sleep, and he said, Surely what? Ah, I'm not hearing you, surely what? Surely what? Can we say louder, surely what? He said, oh, so God is here and I didn't know? So God is here, I didn't know, if I knew God was here, I would just come. Whatever it takes, find God, what did I say? If you lost something and found God, you didn't lose anything. If you gained everything and didn't find God, you didn't gain anything. Verse 17. "And he was afraid, and said, How dreadful is this place? This is none other but what? The house of God, and this is what the ghetto of him, because the heavens are open for encounter. Hold the hands of your neighbor, let us pray for the next two minutes." The prayer is simple. Lord, give me an encounter now that will totally shift my life for the next few weeks, next few years, and in the most significant seasons of my life. Let me go here with something tangible, heavy, that happened in my life that I can carry through my destiny. Is this prayer too hard to pray? Open your mouth and pray the next two minutes, let me hear you. Angels, as they pray, mark their faces. Angels, as they pray, mark their faces. Go deeper in your prayer, go deeper, go deeper, go deeper, go deeper, go deeper! You are following online, you can cry out now. There is something God has for you. There is no distance in the rem of the spirit. This is your moment! This is your moment! It's intensifying! The glory of the heavens is coming! It's coming! It's coming! Oh Jesus, 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 oh Jesus! Yes, it's coming! It's coming! It's coming! The glory of the heavens! Make sure you cry out now. Don't cry out when it's late. Don't cry out when the door is closed. Cry out now, cry out now, cry out now, cry out! Jesus, Jesus! Jesus, Jesus! The portals of encounters are open! The seasons of encounters are here! The Lord is digging a well of revival!